Good evening, y'all. I'm going to call this meeting for order and ask Mr. Powell to do the invocation, and then please remain standing and waiting in the public event afterwards.
Let us pray. Lord, we are grateful to be here again to watch something that's sort of a miracle. It's the gathering of people to govern themselves. Lord, we are grateful for those who are volunteers to be officers of the city. We pray especially to Mayor Proton. She leads a meeting and participates in ways that she is not normal. We're blessed to give her wisdom about how this free speech and free government works. We help her to implement this tonight with excellent excellence. Lord, we have important issues, how the community will be developed and what it will look like. And, Lord, let us hear what all have to say about those things. Lord, we just ask you to bless it and help it to be a wonder that generations to come will be proud of. Lord, in the area of controversy, we've had one. It's a street issue, and finally, that issue comes to be put to the way tonight. Lord, we're just grateful for your solutions for the people who work hard to make those solutions happen. Lord, we just ask that you would bless it and bless the community that's around it so that peace can be returned in this city. Lord, we always thank you for those who serve here, the employees of the city who do so much work, contribute so much to the citizens. We ask you to bless them and give even your favor to them, Lord. We thank you for all these things in Jesus' name.
Amen.
It will be a roll call. We have Ms. Lyndon Pilgrim, Rachel Davis, Councilwoman Maxine. Our city clerk is here. Joe Walters is present, and both city attorneys are present. Regarding the approval, Mayor Moncrief did receive an email from Benchmark Excavating asking their matter be removed from Old Business tonight, or to be tabled, I'm sorry, to the October 10th council meeting. And do I have a motion to?
Is that from, what'd you say, Old Business?
It is Old Business Number Two.
Oh, okay.
Any other changes we might need to get to before we ask, can we relax?
Whoever wants to make a motion.
I'll give a motion to table first.
I'll make a motion to table Benchmark to our next meeting, which?
October 10th.
October 10th.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? All in favor? Did there be any other agenda modifications or can I get a motion to?
Mayor Proton Miles, I would like to make an amendment to our agenda for this evening. I would like to add the consideration of a moratorium on city accepting rezones applications for properties located within the downtown area under new business.
Okay, so that would be a moratorium for Number Four under new business. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All against? Nobody? All in favor. Sorry, I forgot I couldn't vote the last time. All right, consent agenda. Do I have? Under the consent agenda, I would like to modify invoices over $5,000. We have an invoice from LNCO. Council's already approved over $11,000 for the engineer for Emerald Cove. That's what the invoice is for. This invoice is under that, so it doesn't really have to be added to the consent agenda, but Mayor Moncrief wanted it to be. So, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Would that change?
So moved. I've got another question as invoice.
Let's do a second and then discussion.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Go ahead.
Okay. The invoice for $5,312.50 from Precision Planning?
Mm-hmm.
On one line is for ordinance development sewer capacity policy. The word done there, should, is that paid out of the sewer account or general fund?
I'm going to defer to Maxine for that.
Okay, let me go over to.
It should be paid out of the sewer account, I do believe.
I would hate to look at all the line items, but yes, they should be divided according to where they apply.
Hmm.
So, I mean, one invoice could contain something that includes regular city business as well as zoning, as well as inspections.
But if it's broken down as Precision Plan is done, it can be paid correctly, right?
Yeah, correct.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda with that change?
Aye.
Everyone agree? All right, for committee reports, we have Rachel Davis.
I have nothing to report.
Yeah. Mr. Joe Walters for the planning and zoning commissioner report.
I had sent copies of this yesterday. I don't know if you all got it. Did you get you one in your pocket? This for council's benefit. I'll be brief, but Mayor Moncrief asked me to debate you all on this recent activity since we last had a chance to talk. There's currently one active zoning case, which I want to hear later today, which is WGRZ 24-03, and I'll save my thunder on that one. Couple of minutes currently. The city has a number of cyclines under review. Benchmark Excavating, which is the item that you have preferred approval on toward your next business meeting. All comments, if approvals have been received, then it is ready for you all's consideration before it can be permitted. Maximum credit. We issued comments back in October of '23 and have not heard back from them, so that's just city there. On Claybette Al Farm Commercial Track Two, we recently sent forward that all the permits, I mean, all the approvals have been received, but they're supposed to contact the city about getting on your agenda for approval. So they should be doing that, and they were made aware of that. That's the piece. Gas station, the next piece, going from town towards Monroe.
Is it on the agenda for tonight?
No, ma'am, I'm just making you aware. They have not, they have to request to, to you all, to be considered. This is just sort of letting you know where things stand, because, and then Stonehanger and subdivision construction plans, we have issued comments on that back the first part of April, I mean, August, and they are working through those comments and other approvals. Elevation truck sales, which is at 4474 Peterson T. Road, we issued comments on that back on September 5th. Then we just received cyclines for Church of the Grove. We received those in the first part of this week, and those are under review. And then we have a couple of active landstorm permits and a couple of active projects. Any questions on, besides this building, very good question, ongoing work.
Okay, any questions?
Well, and a lot of this is just city, but just to make, just to make sure that the audience is aware as well as remind council that the, once, before any permits are issued, that what you all want to see the cycline, so we're just filling that into the review process where they have to come and see you all. And they present, or what they're willing to do, or what they're doing, you all can even see that and just get more information on that. But we're, we're in the other agency to just review it for, you know, the orders compliance.
And we love that. It's nice to know what's going on with the city. Thank you. And thank you for the report as well. That was very, very detailed. So we will move on to the library report. Ms. Daisy.
Oh, hello. Been fun and exciting. You're welcome. September is going to be an even more fun and exciting October. So I included both calendars of events for you. We did hire four new librarians for students. One of those is a substitute. So I've never had so many team members join me before. We have big plans to tackle all of the projects that we've been wanting to do for a while around the library. So I'm excited about that. Leading, shipping, shelving, cleaning, so some lots of things that we've been wanting to do for a while. And we work on these things all the time, but as you know, you have to do these things all the time. So it would be nice to get on a schedule, so I don't feel like we're behind sometimes on these things. Um, we just have Pokemon event tonight, which always is awesome. And tomorrow is toddler music and movement at 10:30. So Ms. Jenny will be there for that. She's also doing that special Mermaid Storytime in October. We have an event planned every day during fall break when the kids are out of school. So some new performers will be coming. I'm really excited about that. But also, it is September. September is library, new library card signup month. So everybody that comes to the library in September and gets a brand-new library card will get a free book, the whole month. I think we've given out 10 or 12 so far this month. And then also, on September 30th, which is the Monday, it's George Reed's Day. So we'll also be giving a free book out to everybody that just visits our library that day. And we do have books for all ages, from board books for babies all the way up to everybody who wants to read. We have something for everybody. So we have free books to give away, which also brings me to, the fall starts outreach season for me. So I will be at Meridian for Califinware Expo, meeting with our juniors and seniors about careers that they can have in the library system and giving away more materials and letting them know about all of our services and programs that we have. That is fun, because most of the teenagers have no clue what they can access through the library, and they don't even have to come to the library to access a lot of our resources. So that is fun to share with them. And then also, I will be at the Men Grove Fall Festival. We'll have a booth there. We're usually on Court Street. Sometimes we're near the Cultural Center. But again, giving out all kinds of library information, resources, I'll probably give away free books as well. And the reason I can give away all these free books is because we have so many donations of free books to the library. Some of them are in almost brand-new condition, so that's how I'm able to do that. Excuse me, does anybody have any questions for me?
You did a fantastic job, though. Me and Jay.
It's so fun to be fully staffed and actually get to do what I need to do every day.
Yes, totally.
But I will say training is ongoing. As a matter of fact, I'll be working Saturdays, so I can use some extra training with the two new associates. I don't have new associates working the library by themselves for quite a while. Even though I think they can handle it on Saturday, but we'll be doing a lot of extra training that day. So just bear with new people. They are a little bit more prone to make mistakes, but we are working on that, and they're doing a really good job, so I'm excited to know.
Me and Jay met one last Friday, and she was very helpful.
Okay.
I could tell she was newer and she was younger.
Well.
She was fantastic.
Thank you. Two of them, this is their first job, and that's new for me as well, because I do have young people. My daughter will be 18 in November, my son's 21, but they've worked their whole lives. So I'm learning how to really teach people to work from the ground up. And I did want some young people, and I'll be honest, when I first moved to Georgia, I had a hard time getting a job here. And so I wanted, I'm finally in a position where I wanted to pay it forward and really take a chance and train and give a good work environment. And so that was my goal. And it is nice to have a mix of older and younger people in the library. So we'll see how it goes.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, now we will take public comment. If you have anything that you would like to add to tonight's meeting, would you please come forward and state your name and your address?
My name is Bill McMullen. For those of you who do not know, my address is 10130 in Monroe Drive. And I come to give you thanks. Members of the community in Monroe Cove have been watching and waiting for years for something to be done to correct the dangerous situation that occurred when our roadways were paved. I can't say that we've always been patient. I can't say that we've always been appropriate, but we have greatly appreciated all the hard work that all of you have done to get this project finally to the point where it can be approved tonight. There is one thing that we would like very seriously to add into that proposal. It is unusual for us to think that the portion of our neighborhood was left out of business. That code right there was just as poorly paid as the rest of it, and it needs to be included in the project. So whatever is necessary to do that, please do that tonight.
What portion is that?
The, what's the name of the code?
Criminal court.
Criminal court, yes. That was left out for whatever reason. Engineer did not include that in to my list for bids. And I just cannot fathom why, but apparently it was a legitimate error or an individual error. I don't know, won't say, but it needs to be corrected, because they are equally as endangered from poor performance of the previous payday. Their driveways are just as, are as soon as out of the car. But I do appreciate all the work that all of you have done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McMullen.
I'm going to ring the hall, let me go through that, and I just have a question about getting some help.
Kimberly, can you get that?
Answer please.
You do.
I know. Y'all know who we can call about getting a sign outside of the neighborhood about letting people know when there's cars coming out of the neighborhood. Like, because I know we're hitting the roundabout, and the trucks already fly over, you know, Highway 81. But I know you can get a caution light to let people know that people are coming out of that street. I've seen them in other towns. They were speeding. Everybody knows how fast they're going down Highway 81. And people, a lot of people, I don't know if they had coming out of that road. Me, I'm one of them. I know several of y'all, well, people that live in that little town.
So that is something that the city to take care of. During public comment, council isn't supposed to respond. It's the time for you to make comments to mayor and council. So we have made a note of that, and we will get back to that.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I've asked about this before, but I know that now is a good time to mention it to somebody, you know, because they're not doing, you know, it goes from 45 to 35, right when you get into the city limits. And like I said, they're not doing 35. They're doing more like 70, baby mom. They're getting it through there.
I, no. I know.
All right, and I did see Long County Port went over this that day. I'll say.
They did patrol with you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Miss Arlene. Anyone else have any public comments? Okay. We will move forward with the public hearing rezon request, WGRZ 24-02, Barton. We have already heard from the applicant. Do we need a motion to open the hearing? Yeah, okay. Do we? We will take any comments for or against the rezon at this time.
Mayor, I'd just clarify for the record that his case, WGRZ 24-03, this is just a hand up to the record. It would probably notice and advertise, but just in case anyone gets confused.
Isn't that the one that was just tabled?
This, no, this wasn't rezoned. That was her last council work session. In the property that is.
Okay, they're not 1791 walls are out of here. Right. And so rezoning from C1 to a C2.
Right. We have anybody to speak for or against this recall?
Hey, President, I think we heard from the applicant at the work session.
We did.
And so it might be helpful if the, if the planning director gave a normal public hearing report on what that, what the zoning is about, and then the applicant would add anything and then allow opposition to speak if they wanted to. What's their orientation of what they're talking about?
Roger.
Sure. Just for all, everyone's benefit, the applicant is Calvin Dean Barton. The owner was, is Patsy A. Barton, Calvin Dean Barton. It's 5.62 acres and walnuts, 791 walnut, time for Highway 138, which, for all your benefits, is this piece right around here. Front's on 138, goes back a distance. The applicant is currently zoned neighborhood commercial, and the applicant's request is to zone into general commercial. There was no specified use in the application, but the intent was such that they would have more marketable piece of property at C2 than C1. So neighboring uses are a mixture of commercial, agricultural, and residential zoning. Broken Arrow is to the south of it. There's a residential piece to the west, and then there's commercial zoning between it and the Grove, the shopping center, Little Grove Development. The future land use is commercial for your comprehensive plan, but that doesn't really specify the intensity, but it is, it isn't keeping the comprehensive plan. It is within the downtown overlay district, which you all are aware that that does have certain usings that the district prohibits, such as gas stations, automotive repair body shops, automotive motorcycle truck sales, outdoor storage, warehousing, or any large retail use. With this site given its size, would not, it wouldn't have, that wouldn't be an issue. We looked at the impacts, and we looked at the surrounding properties, and the biggest challenge from a planning standpoint is that really, since it didn't specify a user or a cycling was submitted, then it's really hard to gauge the impact of the zoning change on this property or the neighboring properties. Because the property to the west is residential, anything they do is going to have a significant buffer on it until that property is rezoned, and the house that sits on actually is within the buffer. So there would have to be some creative cycle planning done if it was developed. So we, because it's the future land use plan, I couldn't see a reason to not recommend it could be, it could be considered for approval. It's just, there's so many unknowns. Planning Commission heard this back in, on August the 15th, and they sent no recommendation forward. So they decided to just, I guess, allow council to consider this and chew on it and ask, ask questions and then, you know, go from there. So it meets the intent of your land, future land use. I know there were some discussions about appropriateness of C1 and C2 within a corridor. So I just, you know, and I wasn't able to be here at your work session. I apologize. So I, I would be interested in hearing if anything the applicant wished to add to that. But we did, we did place some recommended conditions in there. If y'all choose to move forward on it, and I'll be happy to answer your questions. That was our summary.
Okay. Council, we have. Listen to Mr., should we do, sorry, Mr. Powell, should we allow Mr. Barton to speak, and then the council comments after the public hearing is closed?
Yes, yeah, it would be the applicant, and then anybody supporting it, and then the opposition, and then the council.
Thank you. Mr. Barton, would you like to speak?
Pretty much cleared everything up the last time I was here. There is no specific thing that is going there now. There's been several people that have came and shown interest, and yes, it's in the overlay, yes, it's in C1, blah, blah, blah. But with it being in C2, it could open it up for other opportunities. And I have an understanding that, that we're having this in the overlay to, to see where it, it may or may not need to be changed. So I was trying to get it to C2. My grandmother passed away in 2018, and I'm just trying to, to keep it up and preserve what is there if, if the house can be used for something. If not, then, you know, that's neither here nor there. But I would like to think that with it being on the outside, as far as the parkway being your new downtown, you would want something on the outside versus taking up space in the, on your new downtown. I know it is an older piece of property that's been there for a long time. And I would ask you guys to actually take into consideration to rezonment to C2 so that not only I have a house, my dad's house, so it's not that I need it, so I don't want it to go to waste, or the house to keep going to waste, or whatever, if somebody else could come along and use it. And it's a lot of money to keep up. And I would hope that something good could come in to that side of, just kind of the outskirts, whether it be just a quick trip or a, like, a running gas station or whatever, or just a burger. Because obviously Kelly's Barbecue is about to go away, and we got Domino's and Tom and Johnson down there. So if there could be something, then y'all can consider it. I would really appreciate it. And that's the, we said, the, the properties beside it is residential on the right side, but it's not that they're opposed to rezoning yet, but it is rental properties. But on the left side, it is already a commercial property. Again, to the right, one up, it is commercial, and then on up towards the red light. So I feel like being further from. being further from the red light, it would be beneficial or appropriate from the, the red light and soon to be around, it would be more beneficial there than being close up there with somebody trying to get to the roundabout and turn into a business, right side of it. So that's all I have. If anybody has any questions, I mean, I'm open to it.
Thank you so much.
Can I ask?
We're going to take.
Can I ask this question?
It's okay.
The, who, who owns the residential property next to you? Can I ask that?
Richard and Marinelle Davis.
Sorry?
Richard and Marinelle Davis.
Okay.
To the, to the right.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah.
I managed, I managed that property for them.
Yes.
They live in Florida and they, they, they rented those two houses out.
How much property do they have?
Two acres.
Two acres.
Yeah, and the only reason this is not zoned commercial is because they rent the house.
They rented out. I got you.
You know, they, you know, like I said, if somebody want to buy it, it's up for sale, but, you know, as long as nobody wants it, they're going to leave it like the demons.
I got you. Okay.
Do we have any other questions in the audience?
I'm just.
Blue pets.
So we will close the public hearing and does council have any more? No, I'm sorry.
Anybody, anybody will speak inside first. Or the, cut to outside the applicant and then anybody who's first.
Does anybody want to speak in favor of the rezon? Does anyone want to speak in opposition of the rezon? We will close the public hearing. Does council have any discussion? Any question?
I got a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Looking on the website and the Facebook page, I don't see any postings for this rezon. Didn't it be posted on you or no?
Mister Powell.
And I haven't been able to find where this public hearing was advertised in the paper.
This is an informal for a public hearing tonight.
It's formal, it's formal, but the, but the advertisement for the public hearing that's required by state law goes to the planning commission. That is the one that true, that satisfied the advertising requirement. So this one is not read. The county mayor council is not read advertised. You, you only have to have one public hearing and that's, that confused the people because the, the zoning ordinance requires public hearing performance. So you really have two public hearings, one's not advertised. Um, as far as posting on, on the website, you know, normally the agenda posted, it was on there today, this thing, this was on there. And I think there was, there was a, a, maybe a typographical on the last number that's correct, it just needed to go, but the advertisements were done correctly. And, uh, so I think we're in good shape to, to consider it tonight, finish the public hearing component of it and then you guys get to, uh, approve it, deny it, table.
So so the options for council tonight would be, um, they can approve, they can deny, or they could also deny without prejudice. Um, because the council was to deny this rezon, the applicant would have to wait a year to request another rezon. If you deny without prejudice, he would only need to wait six months or of course it could be approved. That's right?
That's correct.
Do I have a motion regarding the rezon request for WGRZ two-four dash zero three?
Yes, ma'am, I'll let you hear your motion to deny without prejudice. That's right or with?
Without.
Without prejudice. Um, for several reasons, including our, um, envision program initiative.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'm second.
Any discussion?
I, I would just like to say the reason I'm willing to second that, because I've gone back and forth with this and I do think it's important that we look, as I spoke to Calvin um, at the last meeting, that we look at what we, we want to have happen there through our envision program, which we'll get started. And it's important that we decide what that entire area is going to look like before we approve any more rezones.
All right, I have a motion and I have a second. I'll show of hands, please show if you're in favor. And if you're against, two-four, one against. We will move on to the Emerald Cove paving project.
Did you say two-four against?
Two-four in the motion, one was against.
Okay, I want to make sure this is the second thing.
All right, Emerald Cove paving project. Uh, council has all the information on the bids, the cost. Um, Mister Powell, do you, would you like to explain a little bit about the process?
Uh, yes, ma'am. So there were some questions that I heard today from staff. And just, just a, a little bit of history. Uh, this is a real controversy, it's, it's had a community, maybe the most controversial thing that's happened in the state since I've been city attorney. Uh, it started with the mayor council, uh, approving the paving of the street and, and in that learning process, we, we used the normal process at the time, which is for pretty rural, cost effective. And it's, it's evidence that you can save your way into a mess. And so that's what, that's really what happened. There was confusion over, uh, because the engineering and work called deep patching as compared to, uh, uh, a real paving job that would anticipate the milling of the road and get it to the right level. Uh, y'all saw two bids, not this group, there was another council in place at the time, they saw two bids and they worked bids for totally different projects. One was really milling and paving. The other was just deep patching, there was confusion over that. Ultimately, the, the county was doing the paving of this job. And, and they are equipped to pave two rural roads and not incur subconditions. And so the, the standard of care in the city of Walnut Grove is now much higher. Uh, because it takes a lot more to do a real subdivision with curving gutter than it does to do just a rural road. The education process is, is complete now. Uh, when it was done, uh, we didn't pay for labor, we're not, we're not redoing labor costs because the labor of the original job didn't cost me anything. We really were paying for the, the materials that, uh, so. In the year since, it was done really the right way and that is, you approve tonight, an engineer payment, that was the review of the project to design it, two specifics of a bid. And, and the bids that they left according to a competitive bid process are what are for you tonight. And there, there are, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine bids, which is a very competitive asphalt paving environment. One of the things I think is interesting just for the public knowledge is that over time, when we, when nobody knew exactly what to do because the engineering and the estimates of about eight hundred thousand dollars to do this job. Uh, the interesting thing to me is, and, and the low bid in this one is two hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars. That's the low bid and it's the one that's recommended to you by your engineers designing the project. When the project was originally bid, uh, one of the bids was actually for the same type of work you're doing now and that bid was for two hundred and fifty, two thousand, four hundred and fifty. And so in this process, you've engaged an engineer to really design the project and did it correctly. And in the process, you've got a competitive environment that is really saving about twenty-five thousand dollars face to face. Bid. So, uh, you're spending eight to save cost by, that's, that's a smart thing to do and you'll end up with a project that is, that is designed and complete the way you, uh, wanted to be. The question that I heard today was, okay, how do we know that they're going to do this according to plans and correctly? And in your packet, uh, you should have a document that is from your engineer who designed the project and he says, I recommend the city of working contract to the low bidder, which is the SUX company, DPA Sunbelt Asphalt in the amount of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two ninety-six, twenty-five to include all work on Emerald Cove Drive. Uh, and then it's got some sewer plant road reference and city parking area reference too that is inside that bid, uh, pro, process. Um, the, uh, uh, the line before that says bids have been reviewed and the lowest bid certified. And so you, you want to know if these bids meet your standard, yes, every one of them meets your standard. Got a job over a hundred thousand dollars, you have certified bidder, a hundred thou, over a hundred thousand dollar job, you got to take low bidder unless you got another reason not to. So it's, they've not much choice under state law is the low bidder, but you got, and you're saying they're going to build it according to the design and plan. And there is a part of his contract that now supervises it, where he steps in and supervises the city project. So it will be completed according to the design. Or we have a special, we can hold. So, so, uh, really good result and recommendation. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I make a motion. I make a motion that we accept the bid of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-five cents. It was submitted by Sunbelt Asphalt. They take these drugs for the repaving of Emerald Cove, the paving at the sewer plant and the park improvements as are recommended by our engineer, L N C O. And then we include another twenty thousand dollars as the amount that was shown in that document to cover including crystal core repaving and then we add an approximate ten percent contingency uh, approving a total job of up to two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Do I have a second? All right, yes.
Well, President, I just, it's a special period. The purpose, it's, it's more for our public to understand that the purpose for the sewer plant road reference in this is that none of the materials that were used in the paving that the county that did for us are going to waste.
Right.
So those materials that will be removed, uh, from Emerald Cove will be transported over to the sewer plant road, which we have the duty of maintaining. And so all those materials would just be, go back down on that road and, and will be fully used by. So, so we didn't lose any materials, we didn't lose any labor in the process and I didn't see that correct.
Am I also going to use some of those millings for the parking area that's currently dirt in the park?
Our question still, well, my name is.
Not at this time.
Um, and I, I would like to have the first option to make comments regarding the motion I made. Do I, I got a second, right?
We did. Discussion?
Um, yes. Under normal circumstances at this point, this, in my opinion, would be a simple decision of which bid is the appropriate to accept. And I'm going to read because I want to make sure that I don't miss anything that I wanted to say this evening. Uh, but I, so I do want to make this statement, in fact, that the issue has been ongoing for more than two years. First, I want to apologize to all the residents of Emerald Cove. The timeframe for a solution for you has been, in my opinion, unreasonable. You will now be faced with the headache once again of putting up with the construction and work involved with the fix. Even those that did not have effective drives will have to endure this process. So I, for one, once again, am sorry and thankful for the patience you have shown to all of us. Before joining council, I consider myself a fairly well-informed citizen. Now, of course, that I am in this role as a citizen, I also have easier access to information regarding the inner workings of the city. And I can sometimes see perspectives that I was unable to see as a citizen. Not that I did try as a citizen, but often recourse, resources were difficult for me to come by. While I was not a council member at the onset of this situation, I followed as closely as possible. What absorbed then and now leads me to want to bring you this information and to make this statement. Council now and in the future can learn from what we've gone through with this mistake. And yes, mistake. The very biggest mistake I witnessed was the inability to put aside personal preference and egos aside for the sake of the citizens. And for that, I'm saying. Rather than digging in and figuring out the best approach to a solution, there was a struggle for control, which I can still see, see and feel the remnants. This cannot happen if we are to do our jobs and truly be servants of the people. We must, as council members, set aside our differences and filter through data, resources, the opinions of others, and yes, the muck and nonsense to come to the best and right conclusions. To sit here and say that we fight for you as citizens when our votes do not reflect that is just simply wrong. The events associated with this topic we are now upon is a prime example of how that can go very wrong. Not only has this city failed in their response over the course of two years, but we have put people in jeopardy, entering the city in danger of liability and create, created an atmosphere of divisiveness. If as a council person, this is what you choose, then I to support, then I hope the public will step forward at every election and tell you differently. Just this past year, I was at an ethics class where this was discussed. So in some cases, this is considered derelict of duty and can be considered abuse of office or worse. But no matter how much we like or respect individuals as council people, we cannot listen to only that one person. We must do our part. We must research and gain information and knowledge from many sources and in that process figure out what is best for our citizens. When we don't, we stand to make mistakes that are costly, as has happened here. I do not want that to be a part of my legacy and I don't believe that any of you do leave. It is time the leaders of this city put in the time and effort to plan and prepare for our city's future, no matter how difficult that is at times. I don't know about you, but I hope to pass down good processes, procedures and plans that will endure the test of time rather than the continuum of changing in the drop of a hat. I will not always have the answers, nor will any of you, but if you don't tell me what you're thinking on these topics or I don't listen when you do try to tell me, then why are we here? We have to hear one another and we have to speak out. How else are we able to find the right answers? With all of that, let me explain my reasoning for this motion and my vote of yes. Number one, it is the recommended choice by our experts. Number two, the price we have here is nowhere near the half million suggested back in December of twenty-three or the nine hundred thousand dollars suggested later on. In fact, it is much closer to the hundred and fifty thousand, which was the first amount I mentioned to pave the gutters as a fix. Number three, we are also adding to this project three items based on my motion. We are adding the improvement to our park. We are laying down the road as is required to the sewage plant as needed and required. And we are including crystal core in this process. Number four, the council has al, already voted to go forth with this type of fit. So that's not really what's up for grabs here. The only thing's up for grabs is who we select for this project. Sad thing is that in the very first quote for the very original paving for the first job, there was a company that included milling the road in their bid. The price for that milling would have cost us twenty-nine thousand dollars at that time. And when I saw this, all I could say was wow. Had the person in charge of overseeing the project paid proper attention to that one fact, we might not be here today. So I think it is our job for all of us to pay more attention to everything that comes up and dig in as much as we can. So council, if there is any question in your mind as to this vote being anything other than a yes, I would like for you to explain to me why that is the case, why you would vote anything other than yes. Don't make me to wonder after this particular vote that there have been a different answer. I'm listening. I want to hear if there's anything other than a yes on this vote. I want to hear why you think it should be any different. Thank you.
Is anybody else ready to go? Is anybody else ready to go?
Well, there's, I've got community. There's way other roads in this city that presents the same danger that you spoke to face. I brought out here, we leave the park. Every time it rains, it puddles full of water. We've never done anything to fix that. It's got to have some effect with the people living right across the street because y'all know we drive through a puddle of water every time it rains and it stands there. Park Street has no curb and no gutter. We never addressed that. There's a lot of issues that need to be fixed with our roads. Are we going to get the same raise and the same courtesy that every other road we're giving to Emerald Cove?
If they're on, if they're on our table, absolutely we gave the same courtesy, but none of those have been brought to us.
I've been sitting on council for seven years. That's the first word I've ever heard about crystal core was this week. So the danger didn't start this week. It's been there for seven years.
Crystal core is in Emerald Cove. It's part of this project. It was originally improperly paved along with Emerald Drive. It wasn't in this bid.
Not two years ago.
It was, absolutely it was. Yes, ma'am. It was, we paid it two years ago. So we need to do this correctly, but.
It was part of that original pavement. It was not like that one we did there five years ago and not look for it. My driveway does not have a giant hump, but everywhere else does. Mine is the only driveway that's level in our entire neighborhood.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? All against? All right, that is two for and one against. We will move on to new business, the baseball field repair. We have had a chance to review this estimate and tonight we are just either going to make decide to go forward with this estimate or not. I'm going to ask for a.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this to our next work session because I feel like we still need some more information and to do some more research before we make our results.
Okay, I have a motion, do it on a second.
I will section that and agree with the reason.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to table this to the next work session? Raise your hand. All in favor. All right, next on the agenda is the Georgia Reed's Day proclamation. We spoke about this at the last work session. It will be on September thirtieth is the Georgia Reed's Day. Do I have a motion regarding the Georgia Reed's Day proclamation?
A motion that we adapt this Georgia Reed's Day proclamation into the City of Water Grove?
Do I have a second?
One second.
All in favor? Show our hands. All against? Everyone was in favor. Next, under new business is the Georgia DOT closing documents. And Mr. Powell is going to.
Tim, this is really easy. We deal with land acquisition and land sales in consecutive session because they're usually something that is sensitive about it. In this case, we are negotiating with the Georgia Department of Transportation where we have to get along because we do projects together, so we haven't been doing our bids in just when, so most of the negotiations happen in consecutive sessions for some reason. We can't close a transaction without bringing tax, getting an appraisal. In those negotiations, we arrived at a compromise. This department of transportation originally offered three hundred ninety eight thousand seven hundred dollars to purchase the old city hall, which is currently stationed at the intersection. They need property for easements and drainage areas and for the roundabout itself. And so they had offered three hundred ninety eight thousand seven hundred dollars for that. This, the council, mayor council, thought that was too low, had it appraised. The appraisal came back at six hundred twenty thousand dollars. Obviously, that's a two hundred thousand dollars plus to the city and the Department of Transportation has accepted that proposal. So this is just authorized by the mayor to be able to sign those closing documents. They're very simple. In our, in our situation, we have no cost involved in doing that. It's just she needs to pick up a check and then re-sign deeds and easements and warranties regarding that. So one thing that had been extracted is the, is the corner tile is supposed to be removed. That might be tricky, might not be able to accomplish that because it's concreted in and bricks surrounding it. And it's, I think it's a piece of marble that can be a tricky.
So it'd be damaged, so may not be able to say.
It's just getting the right person to do it. It's, it could be a tricky, it could be a tricky process.
It's pretty interesting what they can process. You can turn it out larger and then come down later.
So caution, we have the right to do that. And as they demolish the building, they're supposed to make that available too. Sort of leave it with the, I said, I'm talking to the mayor, this is a careful process and it can be done, but it's got to be done by the right person. If they're low bidding their demolition too, that might not be the right person. But we have the right to do that. We would like to do that, so I encourage everybody, have that discussion because we can do that. They will try to do that if we don't do something for them. Otherwise, it's just to authorize the mayor to pick up that check.
Do I have a motion to authorize Mayor Moncrief to sign these closing documents and pick up a check? So moved. Do I have a second? All in favor? All against? Everyone was in favor. Number four, new business added to the agenda was the moratorium. Everyone has a copy of it and Rachel is going to present that.
This is a resolution by the mayor and council of the City of Water Grove establishing a moratorium on the accepting of applications for rezoning or building permits for properties located in downtown Old Lake District. The title is pretty straightforward. The only thing I can see is that there is a typo on the third paragraph. It says located within, located within, second sentence. Other than that, I think we should approve this as is. Would that change?
Right, and we did talk about this at the last work session. I will give the floor then for positions.
I make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Raise your hand. Thank you. And then we will move on to our reports. And I have a public works report from Mr. Brian Pilgrim. The sewer plant, Casey Miller has completed cutting hay at sewer plant, but no damage to any spray heads. He is easy to work with and has done a really nice job for us. Public Works bush hogged areas that he could not get to and used a weed eater to clean around the spray heads and cleaned the whole property. Also working with Casey to apply a light coat of pre-emergent to the field. In the city park, we had vandalism at the bathrooms at the ballpark, so we installed two new bullets. Park Street, Public Works removed silk vents to correct drainage issues. Old Highway one thirty eight, Public Works called in locates in preparation for correcting a drainage issue, weather permitting, when the job is completed. Grass cut season is coming to an end and we are excited to start new projects around the city.
We need to cut the grass.
All right, and then we have the city clerk's report?
Yes. We had one state patrol ticket in county, repub health, Elliot rentals, and then eight baseball field rentals. For our accounts, our general had five hundred and twenty one thousand, five hundred and seventy nine dollars and nine cents. Our sewer service history, thirteen thousand, three hundred and seventy eight dollars and eight cents. Our money market, seven hundred and thirty nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty seven dollars and forty cents. Our sewer money market, one million, one hundred and seventy five thousand, three hundred and seventy six dollars.
Thank you. All right, and then I also have a code enforcement report. Notices of violations issued August ninth through, August ninth through September eleventh. We had four vehicles parked on grass. One accumulation of junk trash or debris. Total notice of violations was five. And then we have a mayor report. And Mayor Pro Tim, Stephanie is very, very busy and doing a fabulous job. So I'm just going to take this opportunity to brag on her. She is working her fingers bone and she's doing great things for our city. She has been negotiating and getting prices on different projects. There's been so many projects completed in the last eight months that she's been in office and she's a joy to work with. Town Hall, one more thing I want to talk about, Envision Water Grove. That is going to be fantastic for our citizens to input. So please make sure that you're following us on Facebook. There's going to be a lot of things that, that's the easiest way for the city to contact these citizens is if they find out about it on Facebook. Marilyn Hall with Hall Consulting, she does have different ways that she's going to be getting with the council to get information out to the citizens. And so we're all super excited about that, but there's going to be a lot of opportunities for you all to be involved, but just keep your eyes open. And then we have town hall. So if anyone would like to come up and speak, this is a very informal conversation. If you'd like to have any input, you want to tell us how great your job we're doing. You can come on if that's fine.
We all want to do the work. Most of it is.
Thank you, officer. Like I said before, I'm very pleased with what you have done. My question is this, why do the citizens have to raise such cane to get the attention of council? You know about a problem that exists. Why haven't you presented it to council to have it fixed? How, how he sees that, do the citizens have to come in and demand action? That's my question to you. Do they? I don't think they should.
You send me a text message?
Exactly. But why do I, if you know about it, why do I have to tell you about it? Why don't you just take everything?
Because I can't see everything.
Well, she can see, she driving through whatever.
She see it, but yes, she might.
I saw it tonight when I came in. There's a puddle out there that the children could dance in.
That's been like that for years, though.
It's been like that for years, but.
You mean the one by the sidewalk?
Yeah, one right now.
Our public works manager has, was speaking with someone recently regarding a new product to address top holes and things like that. So I will make a note of it and.
But I'm not sure this is really a problem. I think it's a drainage issue. Regardless, my question still remains, do citizens have to come in and make a fool out of themselves to get your attention?
No, there's nothing wrong with a citizen coming in and making a comment.
Right. So my comment is, if you know about it, bring it to your attention of the rest of the members of the council and take the initiative. Go out there and do something. And the other thing is, I told Erica earlier, you folks need somebody to go out there and lay your flag because you have done so many things in this community that most of the community not aware of. I mean, if you don't ride around that circle down there on whatever the name that road is behind libraries, you haven't seen the pictures of the development that's coming in down there. It's unbelievable. It's amazing. It's gorgeous. You haven't seen the projected diagram that's down there on the other side of the road.
And you haven't seen our pollinator garden?
Exactly. Somebody needs to wave a flag about what you gals are doing because you're doing a great job. But you know, that's part of the deal. And we ask questions and you know what? I always get an answer, always get an answer. Not always, likely answer, but always get an answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ramon.
This work, this work will start back.
Are part time from my understanding and the hours fluctuate. They try to keep people surprised.
I have, well, we have somebody that needs to be surprised and y'all might be the best.
Ramon, does have any comments?
I have a question about the Christmas tree lighting. I was wondering if the date for that had been scheduled yet?
November twenty.
Library is closed that day for state holiday. So I just want to make it known that the library will not be able to be used for restrooms.
I will make that note.
I think that's what Tim's there about that.
And I did get that confirmed by our director that we would not be permitted to open that day.
Thank you, Dana.
You're welcome.
But you can come for a tree lighting.
It's also my daughter's eighteenth birthday and she will be skydiving. Because she can't, because she needs to.
You may want to be. Anything else?
Yes, now that y'all approved Emerald Cove being redone, is there a timeline that has been given y'all to possibly start from?
So I've been told it's going to be completed by the end of the year. And the length of time for construction, I'm being told, is going to be a week. So it's going to be annoying for a week, but hopefully it stays correctly.
A week is brief compared to.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, council comments. Council member Maxine?
I think I said it further. Thank y'all for being here.
Council member April Bayes?
Well, like you said, our mayor is a joy to work with and so are all of the ladies. We may not always agree, but we always come together when it's important. I got to attend a fabulous state of the city's breakfast this morning hosted by the Walton Chamber of Commerce and Meta and a few other businesses. And our mayor Pro Tim represented our city well, highlighting a lot of the things like Mr. Mullins stated about the floods that are going up on the parkway and our new Envision Water Grove initiative. She also was able to talk about the grants that we've gotten in our eight months in office. So yeah, we are doing stuff and yes, Stephanie is working her fingers to the bugs. So thank you very much, council and mayor. I hope you hear this. On a recording later.
She's on there, she can hear you.
This week, you know, is the anniversary of nine eleven. So it's a somber, sad situation. But I wanted to talk about, I have some friends in a hiking group. I have with them sometimes, sometimes know because they go places I can't do. On Wednesday, nine eleven, that was, when it means to, okay. On Wednesday, my friends, my hiking group lights down mountain with a fireman in memory and in honor. And I was very blessed to know them. I wasn't able to do it, I would have done it with them, but it's a very honorable thing for them to do.
And we do not have an executive session tonight?
Oh, sorry, it's your, your, I have a, just a comment. Don't forget to sign all the things that are going to be over there.
So pretty easy to have me start signing.
Okay, sorry.
I will like to, another note, project that we've done is the library city hall and all the buildings in the city hall property all got brand new roofs. And we will be putting that out for painting quotes at the city hall as well. So that's another exciting project going on that makes our city improve a little bit. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
You have a second?
Then.
All in favor? Everyone's in favor. We are adjourned.